O beloved city, fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Dean.
Here.
Alderman Cookson.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Siegel.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Here.
Alderwoman Malizigola.
Present.
Alderman McGinnis.
Here.
Alderman LeBrun.
Here.
Alderman Moriarty.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
Fourteen present.
Fifteen present.
And fifteen present. Fifteen present.
Also present are Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President. First, I wanted to mention the fact that we have the parade coming up on Monday. This coming Monday at 9:45 is when they've asked us to gather for a 10:30 kickoff. As usual, it should be a very good event, and I hope as many members of the Board of Aldermen as possible can join me and the Parade Committee to honor the veterans on Memorial Day. Today, we had the groundbreaking on the new David Dean Skateboard Park, which was a great event. If you go out there, you can see the scope and magnitude of this project. You can already begin to see the shape of the skateboard park. It's obviously going to be really fantastic. Alderman Dean tells me it'll be the best skateboard park in New England, which, having seen it, I believe, it was fantastic to be able to do the groundbreaking, and I would urge everybody to go out and check it out. And I can't wait for the opening, which we anticipate will be late August, early September. Other things that have happened recently is the Habitat for Humanity officially opened their new home, the home they're working on, on Chestnut Street, at the former location of the soup kitchen. That's a great project. They've gotten a really good and fast start on the project. That will provide a new home for two downtown Tree Street, Nashua families, and they, after doing other projects in the city, are again really coming through for our neighborhood and our community. Another thing that happened was that Friday night, the Front Door Agency, which of course provides emergency medium-to-longer-term housing for single mothers who are in distress, they had their 30-year anniversary. And in addition to celebrating that, and they've made incredible progress from their beginnings, which were the Pastoral Care Center over across the street at the church, that started when I was mayor before, but they've made tremendous progress in that period of time. And in addition to that, Father Odie, who has been the pastor of the church for slightly over 30 years, is retiring, and the dinner was honoring his retirement. And of course, he has given everything he possibly could to the Front Door Agency and has done a fantastic job with them over these 30 years. And so, we will miss Father Odie. This afternoon, there was a very nice event put on by Mr. Zeniti's high school American history class, 20th-century history. They conducted a tour, a trolley tour around the city where we stopped and visited various historic locations, and five members of the class explained many things about Nashua history to everybody that was on the bus. There were some school board members, Principal Bastide from the high school, and some citizens. It was really nice, and I wanted to thank Mr. Zeniti and his class for conducting that. On tonight's agenda, Mr. President, there's the Crown Street Park and Ride. This is the follow-up project to the acquisition of the prospective rail station that we bought with federal funds several years ago. This project, the conversion or the establishment of a park and ride at that site, is being paid for not by city funds but by federal funds. It's definitely something we should go forward with. The contract is on the agenda, and if we did not, for whatever reason, decide to go forward with it, we would need to pay back the $1,002,000 of federal money we already used to acquire the project. So I would strongly recommend that you endorse the position of the committee and of the Board of Public Works to go forward with that project. And finally, Mr. President, a very sad item, tragic item that you will see. We are being asked, and we're all supporting, the naming of the Little League field at Memorial Park over by Led Street in the name of Kyle Benninger. Kyle was a young man from Nashua who spent most of his life on one or other of the Nashua ball fields as a Little League player and on up through the ranks, and then ultimately as a coach. Paul suffered a very tragic death in his family. Kyle suffered a very tragic death, and his parents, Paul and Patty Benninger, of course, have mourned him in the year since he lost, and I know it's been a very difficult year for them. Kyle died of a very rare illness caused by septic, it seems like. And in order to commemorate Kyle's dedication to the community and this very tragic loss, the Board of Public Works has recommended that we name the field after Kyle, which I think, of course, is a very good thing to do, and I know we will do that on a unanimous basis. I believe the Benngers are here, and they probably will want to address us briefly. Again, a very tragic loss for our community, and I'm glad we're able to recognize Kyle in the way that's being proposed. With that, Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Before we move to the recognition period, I'll ask, I believe it's Mr. Brown that wants to address the board. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Donches, President McCarthy, and the Board of Aldermen. My name is Mike Brown. I'm a resident of Nashua, live at 15 Cathedral Circle in Nashua. I've been asked by the Benngers to present on the behalf of them for Kyle's recognition and dedication of the field. And the Benninger family, Paul, Patty, their daughter Kate is here, and their daughter Keegan, who is in New York City tonight, have been a strength and inspiration to all of us in the past year after the death of Kyle on May 10 in 2016. I'd also like to thank Rob Holmes of Shelley Street in Nashua, who originally presented the petition to name the field after Kyle and got the ball rolling. Unfortunately, he's traveling on business tonight as well. The background, and I'll connect the dots that Mayor Donches gave us. On May 10, 2016, Kyle passed away in Mass General in Boston after a one-week illness that was ultimately defined as severe septic. For those of you who don't know about the disease septic, it's an overwhelming response by the body to infection, which can lead to tissue damage and, in Kyle's case, organ failure, as well as amputations and death. I won't go into a lot of details, but in 2016, there were 258,000 individuals that died of the disease, which is more in one year than all deaths combined of prostate cancer, breast cancer, and AIDS. At the time of Kyle's death, he'd been a longtime resident of Nashua and was employed by Rapid Manufacturing in Nashua. Amongst his many passions in life, Kyle was known for his love of baseball, his love of the Boston Red Sox, as well as his beard. When he passed, a family member, one of Paul and Patty's nieces, came up with a likeness, and that likeness is the picture here, of which you can see the baseball cap and the beard, and it's a likeness that's representative of Kyle. As a matter of fact, he was so well thought of, there is actually an individual in attendance tonight that has the likeness tattooed on his shoulder. I was fortunate to coach in Nashua Cal Ripken for 14 years, of which seven of those years I coached Kyle. His spirit and passion were remarkable. In his playing career, he started in 1994 and played at T-ball, then went on to rookies, then went on to the minors, then went on to the majors, then went on to a Nashua Cooperstown team, then played Ray Oben, then played Pennachuck Junior High, then played Babe Ruth, then played at Nashua High School. When he was done playing, he gave back to the community by being an umpire from 2008 to 2010 in both Cal Ripken minor and major leagues, and then as a Little League coach in 2012. All told, his playing and coaching career in Nashua went from 1994 through 2012. Kyle and I shared a common bond, baseball and birthdays. As a matter of fact, we share the same birthday on June 15, and I happened to be in the room the day he was born on June 15. He's one of the few city kids that can say, "I truly played for the Red Sox," because he played for the Red Sox in Cal Ripken Nashua North, which was the only major-league team at the time that was called the Red Sox. It was while playing for the Red Sox that he delivered one of my favorite moments, or my most favorite moment, in 14 years of coaching. As a matter of fact, I had a painting made for the Benngers. As you can see here, Kyle catching a ball off of the pitcher's mound in celebration in the background. At that particular moment, we were in a playoff game at Nashua North on June 15, 2012, and Kyle was able to deliver one of the best birthday presents that I ever had. He was facing a batter in extra innings. We were up by one run. The batter led the city that season with 22 home runs. The bases were loaded. Kyle was a small lefty, and the guy at the plate was about my size as a 12-year-old. Kyle induced him to hit a pop-up, which he caught on his knees, and that particular catch put us into what at the time was called the Nashua City Championship, and we went on in that tournament to finish third. And for the Red Sox at the time, that was a monumental leap and something that we still celebrate to this day, and I can still see in my eyes that catch as if it occurred last night. In closing, I highly recommend naming a youth field after Kyle Benninger. It's an appropriate honor for someone who had a passion for baseball, played at all levels of Nashua baseball, and for those of you that have been connected with Nashua youth baseball, I named every level that you can possibly play at. And when he was done, he gave back to the community. His death was a tragedy and came far too soon for all of us. But Kyle is the type of youth and young adult that the city of Nashua should be proud of, commemorate, and celebrate. Thank you for your time and your understanding.
First reading of Resolution 17-103, recognizing Kyle Benninger and naming the Little League field at Memorial Park on Led Street, Kyle Benninger Field.
Alderman Dean.
Thank you. I move that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of R. 17-103.
Motion is that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for a second reading of R. 17-103. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 17-103, recognizing Kyle Benninger and naming the Little League field at Memorial Park on Led Street, Kyle Benninger Field.
Alderman Dean.
I move for final passage of R. 17-103.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17-103. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 17-103 is adopted.
Read the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Resolution recognizing Kyle Benninger and naming the Little League field at Memorial Park on Led Street, Kyle Benninger Field. In the year 2017, resolved by the Board of Aldermen, the city of Nashua recognized Kyle Benninger and that the Little League field at Memorial Park on Led Street shall be named Kyle Benninger Field. Kyle Benninger, the son of Patty and Paul Benninger, very nice people, by the way, was born and was a lifelong resident of Nashua. He attended Nashua schools and graduated from Nashua High School North in 2007, where he was on the baseball team and golf teams. Kyle played youth baseball and golf throughout his sports years and was a member of the Merrimack Valley Curling Club. He's a good curler, too. I used to see him on the ice on occasion. He loved watching sports and was an average Red Sox fan and Patriots fan. His last job was at Rapid Sheet Metal in Nashua as a project engineer. Kyle was kind and caring, and he had a gentle soul and a big heart. He made everyone feel at ease and comfortable in his presence, and always had a smile on his face. Kyle's involvement in Nashua baseball included the following: 1994 to '95 Rockies T-ball; '96 to '98 Orioles; '99 minors; 2000, 2001, Red Sox majors; 2002, Ray Oben, Pennachuck Middle School, and the Diamond Devil Cooperstown team; 2003, Rangers Babe Ruth, Pennachuck Middle School; 2004, Rangers Babe Ruth, Nashua High School North; 2005, 2006, Nashua High School North; 2008, 2010, umpire for minor and major league games; 2012, coached Little League Mariners. Kyle died unexpectedly on May 10, 2016, at the age of 26, after suffering from a sudden illness. Naming the Little League field at Memorial Park on Led Street after Kyle is a tribute to his life and love of sports.
That's it. Thank you, Alderman Dean. Reading the minutes of the previous meeting and public hearings, Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move that the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of May 9, 2017, and the public hearings conducted by the Human Affairs Committee on May 8, 2017, and the Budget Review Committee on May 15, 2017, be accepted, placed on file, and the readings suspended.
Motion is that the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of May 9, 2017, and those of the public hearings conducted by the Human Affairs Committee on May 8, 2017, and the Budget Review Committee on May 15, 2017, be accepted, placed on file, and that the readings be suspended. Is there any discussion of that motion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Communications, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that all communications be read by title only.
Motion is that all communications will be read by title only. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from John Griffith, Chief Financial Officer, relative to uncompleted project status report.
Alderman Dowd.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is to accept and place on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to award of 25 Crown Street Park and ride construction.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award the contractor, George R. Karen &amp; Sons, Inc., in the amount of $1,653,175.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and award the contractor, George R. Karen &amp; Sons, in the amount of $1,653,175. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to award of 2017 sewer replacement program.
Alderman Siegel.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award the contract to DeFaleese Corporation in the amount of $3,255,683.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and award the contract to DeFaleese Corporation in the amount of $3,255,683. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Okay, to the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Mark Proman, 70, Crestwood Drive, Hollis, New Hampshire, to the Office of Business and Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire April 30, 2020. I have this day appointed John Stabile, 48 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Office of Business and Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire September 13, 2019. I have hereby, I have this day appointed David Dennehy, 56, Sharon Ave, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Office of Business and Industrial Development Authority for a term to expire September 1, 2019. I have this day appointed Simon Saris, 23, Auburn Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Office of Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2019. I have this day appointed Si Mufus, 227 and 1/2 Main Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Office of Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2019. I have this day appointed Ron LaFleur, 93, West Pearl Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Office of Downtown Improvement Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2019, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in...
I have a question.
Alderman Dean.
If these are all reappointments, don't we normally ask if anyone wants them to appear?
Yes, we do. Does anybody want these people to appear for interviews at the Personnel Committee?
So what do we do now?
We send it to the committee and have it come back.
Okay.
Any further discussion of the motion? Alderman Moriarty.
I have a comment. It's more of a point of sort of opinion. At least the first three or four, traditionally, it's the home address that's listed. It doesn't have to be. Maybe it's just my assumption, and that may be incorrect, that people use their home addresses here. But the last two, Si Mufus, I don't think he lives at 227 and 1/2 Main Street, Nashua. I guess we could use a business address, but it sort of seemed more consistent if all home addresses would have been listed. I mean, people who live outside the city and contribute, that's fine with me. Might as well take credit for it.
I believe the address is given that way because the requirements of membership are that you must have a business or live in the downtown.
For that committee?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
And Mr. LaFleur does indeed live on West Pearl Street.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Reports of committees. If there are no objections, I will declare the reports of the Budget Review Committee of May 4, May 15, May 18, 2017, accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Finance Committee of May 17, 2017, accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, I will declare the report of the Human Affairs Committee of May 8, 2017, accepted and placed on file. Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules. I move that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for an oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held earlier this evening regarding Resolution 17-101.
Motion is that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for an oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held earlier this evening regarding R. 17-101. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. Yes, the Human Affairs Committee met at 7 o'clock this evening to take up Resolution 17-101, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $808,298 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity, FY18, FY19, public health network services. This is another time-sensitive grant. It came in right after our last Human Affairs meeting. It needs to be up to the Governor and Council for their last meeting in May, before June 1. So that's why we held a special meeting this evening to take up this piece of legislation. The committee recommended final passage. It will fund a substance misuse coordinator and prevention program. It also will fund some youth education for 15- to 25-year-olds on substance abuse leadership and training. So we think this is a really good use of this fund, and we hope that you will... Motion to pass this this evening. That concludes my report.
If there are no objections, the oral report will be accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons?
There are none.
Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution 17-095, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and the Home Investment Partnership Program funds for the fiscal year 2018.
Alderwoman Moriarty.
Yes, I would move to amend R. 17-095 in its entirety by replacing it with the Golden rod copy provided with the agenda. And at our last Human Affairs meeting, it was brought to our attention that it's anticipated that the federal government will be level funding for this award, but because it's a formula, we're not sure exactly what our numbers are going to be. So if you look at the end of this piece of legislation, there's wording that allows to adjust the numbers to reflect whatever increase or decrease we get in the annual home fund. And also, there was economic development requested that instead of putting $15,000 in the micro enterprise fund, which has around $43,000 in it, that that be combined with the money they had requested for the fire station, and that that was the priority this year. So those are the changes that came out of committee. Thank you.
Motion is to amend by replacing R. 17-095 in its entirety with the Goldenrod copy provided with the agenda. Alderman Wiltshire.
I will not be voting on this piece of legislation as I'm employed by the children's home, who has requested funding in this resolution.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the amendment is adopted. Alderwoman Wilt...
Yes, I would move for final passage of R. 17-095 as amended.
Motion is for final passage of R. 17-95 as amended. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. R. 17-095 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-097, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to a... to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,200,000 for roof replacement work at Fairgrounds Middle School and Ledge Street Elementary School.
Alderman Dowd?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage due of R 17-097 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Motion is for final passage of R 17-097 by roll call. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, the majority of this work is at the Fairgrounds Middle School. And as was addressed by Mr. Smith when he was here at the Budget Review Committee, parts of the roof are being held down by having heavy tires on them. It's in immediate need of repair. And a smaller part of the, this covers a small piece of roof on the Ledge Street Elementary School, but the majority is at the Fairgrounds Middle School.
Any further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Schunnaman?
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman McGinnis?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
15 yeas.
Motion carries and R 17-97 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 099, approving a first amendment to tower replacement agreement with Verizon Wireless.
Alderman Dowd?
Motion for final passage of R 17-099.
Motion is for final passage of R 17-099. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries and R 17-99 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-101, relative to the acceptance and appropriations of $808,298 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity FY 2018 and FY 2019, Public Health Network Services.
Alderman Wilshire?
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 17-101.
Motion is for final passage of R 17-101. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R 17-101 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-102, relative to the transfer of $25,000 from the Department 194, contingency account 70100, general contingency to FY 17, Department 109, civic and community activities, accounting classification 56, outside agencies for the purpose of donating to the Nashua Association for the Elderly.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-17-102.
Motion is for final passage of R 17-102. Is there any discussion? Alderman Wilshire?
Thank you. I'd like to commend Alderman Karen and the work she and the board have done over at the Nashua Senior Center. They continue to do good work over there and I'm happy to support this piece of legislation.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R 17-102 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
There are none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution 17-104, relative to the acceptance and appropriations of up to $300,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation into transit grant activity, Transit Capital Outlie.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Wilshire, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Malisi Golia, and Alderman O'Brien, and Alderman Lopez. And R 17-104 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-105, updating the citizen participation plan for HUD programs to reflect assessment of fair housing requirements.
Alderman Wilshire, Alderman, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman O'Brien, and Alderman Lopez would like to be added. And R 17-105 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-106, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement and consent to joint use with Eversource.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Siegel, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. And R 17-106 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure. New business ordinances?
First reading of ordinance 17-039, amending the zoning map by expanding the historic overlay district by adding Greeley Park.
Alderman Malisi Golia?
Yes, I would move to accept the first reading of O 17-039, assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Motion is to accept the first reading of O 17-39, assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Period for a general public comment. One people, one, one person has signed up. Elizabeth Carroll? I don't believe she's here. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen, I'll start over here. Alderman Lopez?
I would just like to say I was really looking forward to running the Gate City Marathon, except I managed to scratch my eye the night before, so I wasn't able to compete. But it was an outstanding event. I want to thank the Gate City Stratus for putting it on and apologize to the constituents who put signs out. I will definitely run next year.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, sir, thank you. I would like to express my regrets due to a family wedding. I won't be able to make this year's Memorial Day Parade and everything, but I would like to thank our veterans, particularly those that have made the supreme sacrifice in defense of our nation. And this is this very special day. Thank you.
Also there, Alderman, Alderman Malisi Golia?
Yes, last week, VFW Post 483 celebrated the opening of their new home on 8 East Pearl Street, and so congratulations to them as they get settled in there. Also, ADK, which is a educators' honor society, is having their annual plant sale on June 3rd at 15 Spencer Drive. This organization is made up of teachers here in the Nashua School District, and every year, the money that they raise is used to provide two scholarships, $1,000 each for high school seniors going into education. And last year, they also spent over $3,000 providing clothing, fooding and personal care, food and personal care items to students within our school. So, if you are looking for plants, they always have a great supply. And finally, a reminder, Taste of Nashua is June 7th from 6:00 to 8:30, and I believe we all received a notice that there are still some reduced price tickets available until May 26th. So, hopefully we'll have good weather. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd?
I'd just like to make note that the intersection of Sharon Avenue and Amherst Street, the construction is moving along quickly, and they plan for completion of that work, including the repaving of that portion of Amherst Street in mid-July.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I want to welcome back our colleague, Alderman McGinnis. Glad to see you back. And I also want to take a moment to thank our men and women in the military who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you.
Alderman Wilshire?
Thank you. I just want to make mention of an article about Lieutenant Carlos Camacho of the National Police Department. It's from the Archdiocese of Manchester. Really nice, well-written article about Carlos Camacho, such an awesome, awesome addition to our, or member of our police department. And it's really, really good article. I'll leave it in the back room for those of you who might like to look at it.
I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking this morning for the skate park as well. It really is a fantastic piece of work, and I think it'll be a great asset to the city. And while I was standing there looking at it, it's nestled in between Stella Stadium and Conway Arena and the YMCA and all of the work we've done at, at Mine Falls. And we really have provided some great recreational activities for our citizens over the years. But I did want to thank Alderman Dean for his work on getting the park to have a location and in pursuing getting a great design for a great new facility. Alderman Dean?
I can't wait to see the O'Brien versus Siegel match when it's-
(laughter)
Ken, you got this.
I'll be in charge of dialing 91.
You're standing by, yes.
Any committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Yes, this Thursday at the Nashua High School North at 7 o'clock, Construction Committee and followed immediately by the Joint Special School Building Committee.
Alderman Cookson?
Thank you. Committee on Infrastructure will be here tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM.
Else? Is there a motion? Alderman Wilshire?
I'll adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:11.